This meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. There is a presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called on the notice of meetings and posted in the time and manner required. Thank you for coming, guests, today. We will go ahead and get started. First item on the agenda, action items 3A, the easement to on court for our REEL. On your agenda, there is an action item to reconsiderations board. Mr. Loper is here to take the board through the request to on court for REEL.
Thank you. This is basically an easement for our new transformer for the new school as it's being built. It's always required at any time that we build transformers and all. The copy in your board agenda shows the map of where the easement is. I'm sorry it didn't copy very good, but it's that square, that long area there off of Red Raider Drive right below this little letten here. I don't know if you can see it or not, it's hard to see it online. But anyway, that's basically right where the old entrance is to the back parking lot. Oh, there it is up on the board. You can see it real good there as far as the location. And that's basically so instead of new transformers, they have new schools.
Any questions for Mr. Loper? So it's pretty straightforward. There's not more than meets the eye for this transformer. Okay. Thirty seconds.
That's a great question.
Any other questions or concerns?
I move we accept the administration's recommendation.
Mr. President, thank you. Reverend Mason, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the addition of some more T-Test appraisers. So your package, you have the list of the additional T-Test appraisers. These could be new administrators that recently were certified and had to go through all the rigorous training to become a T-Test certified appraiser. It's pretty mundane, routine, making sure we get everybody certified to actually appraise them as an administrator.
Mr. Chairman, how move we approve the additional appraisers for T-Test?
Thank you very much, Reverend Mason. Second?
Second.
Two seconds. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number three is to consider the approval of a leadership pipeline initiative. We have with us Ms. Cano, Executive Director of Human Resources, that's actually going to sit at the table and at the hot seat and go over this presentation for the board. As I continue to introduce this, you know, when you stay in one place long enough, and that's a good thing, superintendent tends to, his rolodex tends to run dry. And you start looking at ways to fill your stacking needs internally. And we've got what we think is a good plan with an outstanding university in our town for us to partner with them in growing our own future administration. Ms. Cano?
Very good. Well, thank you for your time. I will talk about a couple of our Grow Our Own initiatives. Like you said, we always have to be looking into the future, into next year, what's going to come open, how are we going to fill the positions. But before I go into the new and exciting next phase of our Growing Our Own, I wanted to give you an update of the Tyler Ready Principal Program. We talked to you about this program in 2015. In the fall of 2015, we came to you and said, we are going to look out in the district, see who is already certified to be an administrator, who is ready to be a principal, but they need a little bit of extra training into what it takes to be an effective administrator in the district. And so we set some parameters to look for diverse people that were committed to stay with us. And we did just that. You know, we talked to you about it, we got these folks in. And since we started, we've been pretty successful. We started, the first cohort was in the spring of 2016. Can you even see those numbers? Are they kind of tiny?
I got it.
Yeah, you have a copy. Very good. So we presented it to you in the fall of 2015. Then we started our first cohort in the spring of 2016 with a total of eight participants. Out of those eight currently still in the district, we have five that are in some sort of leadership position, whether it's in the CNI department, or assistant principals or principals. You know, some of them were even assistant principals and now are principals. So out of those eight, five of them are currently still with us. Three of them have left the district, but they have left to be an administrator in another district. So that's a positive. In 1617, we had a cohort of six. Three of them are still with us, and three of them left for other opportunities, but they were all leadership opportunities, so that's good. And then last year, we had a group of six dynamic folks, that five of them are with us in a different leadership position. So one of them has left just recently, actually, to be a principal in a neighboring district. Last night, we had our selection. Out of 23 applicants, 23 people in our district applied. It's a pretty selective RDS process that we follow to select the people, but we're looking at about eight or nine for this next cohort. So this pipeline is strong and it's going, and we feel like we're getting really good results. We spent six to seven sessions with them. It's most of our leadership, Dr. Sanchez and all the other executive directors of schools. They meet with them after school. We talk about what it takes to be a good leader in our district, and we're seeing the dividends, definitely seeing the dividends from that, so we'll continue with that. But, you know, you gotta continue to, yes.
Well, I think it was great to hear that.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So that seems like a good ratio in terms of folks who are still with us. Some years better than others, but how many of those are in principal roles? So if we've had a total of 20 go through, how many are principals in Tyler ISD, do you guess?
Gosh, I would have to, I mean, I can tell you some right off the top of my head, like Ms. Natasha Crane, Brett Shelby. I mean, I have to, I would have to go, yeah.
Four out of the, we had five last year, principal vacancies in the field. Four of the five actually came through the trip.
Right.
The Tyler, Tyler and Principal Program.
Correct.
And so that's the most recent, I mean, again, you mentioned some other ones that previous years.
Yeah, I should have brought those names, I'm sorry, but.
In addition to the people who will become principals, not everybody that was in the cohort were assistant principals. They could have been instructional coaches, they could have been master teachers that have then ascended into the assistant.
Assistant principal role, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
You got a question?
Ah, good question. Who serves on the selection committee?
So on the selection committee, we have Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Jones, and then last night, we had the three school improvement officers. So Dr. Davis, Jared Bitter, and Jonita Martin. And then I'm in there as well.
So no principals?
Not at this time, no.
All right. Part of the selection process is they have to have a letter of recommendation.
From their principal.
From their principal.
I've lately been concerned about growing male administrators within our district. It was always a plus to have men on campus, outstanding men, serve positive role models for our students. So I certainly hope that we're also looking at a cadre of men and women, and that you have a good ethnic mix.
Yes. In fact, last night, that was one of the things that we really do pay close attention. We want our leaders to mirror the demographics of the district, and so that's definitely at the forefront. So hopefully with this next layer that we're wanting to begin, that that can be addressed in terms of, you know, male leaders and the diverse. I'm going to spend a few minutes talking about Team One Tyler. And we want to create this next layer, right? So we've, we're already, we have a pipeline to identify folks that already have their certification to be a principal, but what do we do with these dynamic teachers that are out there making great impacts in the community, whether they're doing tons of things with kids after school, or our people go in there and observe, and they're just dynamic teachers, kids follow them, they're teacher leaders, you know, teachers follow them. We want to identify teachers that are already doing great things to get their certificate, to become a principal with us. And so what we are proposing is to establish a pipeline of quality, diverse school leaders to mirror the demographics of the district. We want to go out there and look for a cadre or a cohort of seven to 10 teachers to obtain their master's degree in educational leadership. We are, what we are offering, you know, what we are willing to provide is we are willing to pay for their tuition, give them a textbook allowance, provide some testing reimbursement, and then in addition, provide some professional development opportunities to really go above and beyond what a master's program does for any of us that go and get a master's degree. We want to have some Saturday academies or the ability to participate in some institutes, some seminars that will really round out that training that they receive through the university so that they are able to walk into one of our schools and just take it to the next level. What we are asking for in exchange from the teachers that participate is that they, you know, that they commit to staying with us for three years. We are currently working with our school attorneys to come up with an agreement that is, you know, fair and fair for both sides, and that we really do enter into a partnership that says, okay, I'm going to further my education, but I'm going to invest in the community that I live in. So we're looking for very diverse, very committed to the community, homegrown, you know, that want to stay here, that want to make the community better. That's what we're looking for. So that's the whole premise of Team One, Team One Tyler. From there, I'm going to talk a little bit about, you know, some of the criteria. I mean, and this is just, it goes into the, it's a little bit of the minor details, but of course, we want teachers to have at least three years of experience, so we don't want somebody that's super novice, but we want them to have good footing into what it is to teach. There will be an application process, there are some criteria. We want them to obtain a letter of recommendation from their current administrator and maybe one other person do a statement of why they're interested in doing this. But the biggest thing is we're heavily going to rely on people that are in our schools. You know, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Bitter, Ms. Ward, Dr. Hanson, Dr. Davis, you know, they're in there, they're looking at these teachers, they're seeing them in action, and we are going to encourage them to apply. You know, Mr. Sanchez may already have somebody in mind and say, hey, I really want you to apply for this. The reason this works, and I can give you a personal example. I had a professor from Kansas State University, Dr. Socorro Herrera, who spent a lot of time in my classroom, and she gave me a similar type of opportunity, and that's the reason I am here today. You know, I would probably still be teaching if somebody didn't see that potential. And so we definitely need current leaders to look out and see who is out there and can do it.
So is this open to any teacher who has at least three years of experience, so everybody will be knowledgeable of?
The information? Yes, the information will be dispersed. Yes.
Okay, ask the question. The teaching, does a teacher have to teach three years before they take the test, or do they take the test first?
So they would, they would currently be teachers, they would have their teaching certificate, then they would go through the program, through the master's program, and then that's what qualifies them. Once they complete that coursework, then they can take the test to add the principal certification onto their license.
But I need a minimum of three?
Three years.
Before they can apply?
Right. We do have some little go-getters, you know, that after one year, they'll tell us at the interview, well, I'm ready to be a principal. And we're like, well, let's teach for a little bit, and then we'll go from there. How about that?
Is this a two-year program?
So I'll talk a little bit about the cycle, yes. So we are, so the way we're going to go about it, of course, we can do the academies, and we can do the institutes and all that, but we need to hire, you know, a UT Tyler is going to be, who's going to partner with us. And so I have Dr. Jennifer Jones, who has, she's an assistant professor for UT Tyler, and we've been working together on outlining how it's going to look and how they're going to help us make sure that this is a streamlined process. What will happen is we will have each cohort follow a spring, summer, fall, spring cycle. So that would mean that our very first cohort of people, we will be ready to make selections from that group in the spring of 2020. So it is going to take about, you know, a year and a half, a year and some summers to get them ready to take on those jobs. So in the meantime, we'll have, we'll have some people in our pool from the Tyler Ready, and then in the summer of, in the spring of 2020, we should have 15 to 18 people that, you know, we can pick and we can select from that, you know, where do you fit, and what is your skill set, and how can that work? So that's the whole partnership thing with UT Tyler. Very excited about just how the planning process has gone. The investment, you know, because everything, it costs money to invest in people, and whereas Tyler Ready, we've been investing of our time, you know, after school, from four to six, we meet with people. This is going to require some cost. We know that the tuition for each participant, and that's for the whole cycle, it's not per year, so it's for the whole cohort. The tuition for anyone to go get their masters is around $7,500. We are looking to have some testing reimbursement. The principal test costs around $400, and then they have to take a GRE and some other testing. We're not just willing to pay for it, but you have to bring a passing score, you know, because sometimes you can't take a test two or three times and not pass it. I mean, we won't reimburse a failing test, but rather, once you pass it. And we thought a textbook allowance for the whole cycle, give or take about $1,000, we really don't know, those were our best estimates. And then other professional development opportunities, whether they be seminars that we provide ourselves on a Saturday, or after school, or we bring in someone that can perhaps work with our Team One Tyler and our Tyler Ready. So that may be some speakers that can come in, or there may be some opportunities where we go to some institutes, some seminars, some things like that. Like I said, our intent is to provide a very well-rounded experience so that they, you know, they get their masters, so it's the cupcake, and we're going to maybe do some frosting and maybe do a little bit of sprinkles, I don't know. So we're looking at it costing about $10,000 per participant, and that's, that really is the breakdown of the investment that we are asking for. So if we have 10, that's about $100,000 per cohort. If we find seven, and we're not just going to fill the spots, you know, we really want these people to be ready to take on the challenge. When we take a look at the launch timeline, we're doing all the heavy lifting in terms of identifying folks and getting them ready, get them, you know, give them an orientation and getting them to apply at UT Tyler, you know, to have them ready to begin classes on January the 20th. So it's tight there at the beginning. I can be, we can be a little bit flexible because application to UT Tyler is by December the 20th. But overall, I think it's very doable. We're very confident that we can get this up and going. You know, the framework is set, set in place to make it happen.
Is a GRE required for admission to UT Tyler?
Yes.
So added to that launch timeline, is someone going to need to successfully take the GRE?
Yes, and they do it online. We checked, they get their results within three days, so it should, it should work.
And the GRE is also, I guess, staggered on, depending upon what their grade.
Their GPA, yes.
Or bachelor's.
Yeah.
So some folks might need to make a really high GRE score if they were playing baseball and trying to.
[inaudible]
At 275, I thought it was.
Right.
But anyways, or if they're a 4.0, then their GRE doesn't need to be quite as high. So it's not so difficult and so challenging that someone with a mediocre GPA in their bachelor's would not be able to still successfully maybe acquire.
Well, and by definition, you know, the people that are going to be, that are going to be motivated enough to enter into the agreement and to be identified by people as current leaders already, you know, they'll be really motivated to take care of business and get it done. I mean, that's kind of what I'm banking on. Teachers, for the most part, we're very, you know, rule followers.
Well, has there, on Tyler Ready, the ones that we have the figures on, who is still in the district?
Yes.
Has there not been an agreement that they made to stay in the district for a certain number of years?
We really don't have that, because they already have their masters, they've already paid for their education. So this is really an investment of their time as well, because they come to us after work. They say, you know, we do sessions of two hours to two and a half hours, six times a year, six to seven times a year. So it's a commitment for their own growth, so we don't have anything like that in place.
And TRP, the trip, Tyler Ready, remember, the reason we're doing that is, is that, and I think there's a lot of reason we're doing the Team One as well, is we don't get to really know people very well, just through one time interview for instance, a principal position. Or a principal position. And so we want to be thorough and not just have this, hey, who wants to be a principal mentality. We, folks, need to understand what our expectations are, the direction that we're going in a lot of, in our district, and the theory of action for our curriculum instruction program, the school improvement, special ed, to hiring practices, to budgetary practices. You don't get that just your normal assistant principal interview.
Yeah.
And I think the ones that have found leadership opportunities outside of the school, outside of Tyler ISD have done so because they just haven't given us enough time yet. There's always a fit. I mean, we're always.
We're always looking.
What may be right for one campus may not be right for another one, so you kind of got to get in line.
Yeah.
And it doesn't guarantee anything. It's the same thing on this, is, you know, we want them to go through this program, get their master's opportunity, and along the way, do it in a way that's different than what higher ed's currently offering. No offense, Dr. Jones.
Right.
But, you know, a lot of us did not get our graduate degrees the way that everyone's getting graduate degrees now. I mean, it is really, it turned into an online deal. My own family has folks in it who got a masters who never once set foot on their campus and never once saw their advisor.
Yeah.
So in saying that, that's great from the academic point of view, but what we're trying to do is to kind of a hybrid, an old-school way to where you learn some of those personal interactive skills that you need when you become a principal. You know, when you become a principal, you're not going to sit there and type a paper and submit it over a computer.
Best case scenario.
When something, when you got to make a decision.
Right.
So in saying that, we really want to carry this on with the Team One thing, where we have these institutes, these Saturday academies, taught by those of us, including the superintendent, those of us that are, that are in leadership roles in the school system, so that we can kind of get that, that missing piece, I think, is, that is so evident right now in these online university systems. Now, I'm not being critical of higher ed, because they do a great job on the theory part of it. They do a great job on some of the practical portions of it, but, and they're having to do it for survival. I mean, once Lamar started all of this, you couldn't compete with that. And so in saying that, we're trying to do our own little thing here to fill that rolodex up for y'all, so we can have effective administrators that meet the demographic needs of our school system, at the same time meet the.
The needs of the school.
The needs of the students and the positive trajectory we have going on.
We can already see through discussions, you know, even, even with Tyler Ready, it's so evident that the folks that are making decisions on who is going to take the next school, or be the next principal, assistant principal, they really know them, and they know where that person will excel and just take the school on to the next level. And we are seeing those principals be successful, and they build such a good relationship and rapport already with some of the key people, that that's probably one of my favorite parts, is just how it has evolved.
Yeah, there's trust there. Y'all can remember the, when we, was that 14 or 15, I guess, the spring of 15, when we reconstituted four campuses, and saying that choosing principals from, that have been assistant principals in our school system to take on high-knee, very delicate campuses was probably not an effective strategy.
Right.
Because we had done that a couple of times over at those campuses, and we just couldn't dig ourselves out of the hole. So we had to hire some, some outside of the district principals that worked well for us.
With experience.
But how many times are you going to be able to do that? And so that's why we're able to, plus, if we're getting out of TEA jail, and things are effective and they're working, replicating that within our own human capital is something we want to continue to try to do.
Yes.
I remember when we first discussed this several years ago, we were asking the district, and I want to thank you all for moving forward with that and complimenting me on your efforts. I appreciate the fact that we're looking at our loyal and dedicated.
Yes.
Outstanding teachers who will make, one day, outstanding principals with proper training and the leadership from the central administration. I want to go back, however, to the male component.
Yes.
I know you just don't want to accept anyone, but I really hope you're looking at Hispanic men, African-American men, Caucasian men.
Yes.
Who will be leaders for our children. Our children need to see more men in leadership at the campus level. And I think this superintendent has done a wonderful job in promoting men, but we need some more African-American men and Hispanic men, of what.
And we'll work on that, Reverend Mason. You know, our elementaries need a good diversification, both ethnically and.
Gender.
Gender speaking.
Right.
But in saying that, I saw some data from Texas, the Texas A&amp;M University, not the one where I got my degree over there in commerce, but if you look at the pipeline of their teacher ed, what they've got in their school of education, I want to say 85% of the people that are in their school of ed are female.
Female.
I'm sure. We don't, we don't paint a good picture to our young men, and I assume elementary mill and high school, so that that desire might be there. And perhaps with the programs that you have at the high school level, you might be able to encourage, and then, man, see, the money they can make in other areas, they go for.
They go for it.
Yeah. I met with the commissary yesterday, the educational pathway, which I, Mr. Sanchez said, we've got, I don't know how many sections of those we have with students that are in that pathway, where we actually get credit, there is a certification they can earn along the way that is recognized, so it helps our accountability. We've got the grow your own stuff going on within our schools right now. We've talked about that. And there are men in there. There's, it looks about 85, 15, you know, honestly, but, you know, coaching profession, a teaching profession paired with a coach experience, at least for a little bit, you don't have to do it forever. And then in administration, there are some people that can make successful careers out of that. I know a guy.
And those are the names?
So, and I know two guys. I know the one that first went to the superintendent, and the one that's coming back behind it. Make a good living, raise a good family, and have fun doing it, and make a difference in kids' lives along the way. So I'm glad you've given them permission to do that. That will not be a requirement, but it will be something that we try to make sure we.
It's a consideration for sure.
My consideration.
It has to be, yes.
Dr. Trump, can I interrupt real quickly? Going back to Dr. Nation's question, one of the things that Ms. Cano has reached out to us about as far as the commitment and. to us about as far as the commitment and the financial commitment by both the district and the educators is we're working on how we can ensure that they stay with us after they're gone or that we see some of our investment back if they choose to leave. So we are looking at that.
That was my question was, was there any clawback or any sort of enforcement ability that you were going to propose in there?
There will be. I don't have the details on that yet and there's some limitations on what we can do. We're going to do what we can.
And then also the limitations on the ability to actually collect.
There is always that.
In terms of total cost for the participant, this would represent 100% of the total cost? Or are there other costs that they would bear?
There might be some softer costs that they may bear. Obviously, they won't get room board, they won't get a full ride. There'll be transportation costs that they'll probably have to pick up on, transportation to and from different sites. And we may not pay the full cost of textbook reimbursement.
Right.
Technology may need to be done under our expectations. In other words, we're...
Something more on loan.
Yeah, something more on loan than we already have as opposed to buying new. So there might be a little bit of a cost for that. Tasha, Ms. Bjorki has talked about skin in the game for these participants, and there'll be some in there as well. But ultimately, we're hoping that we can find something to wear.
Right.
The ultimate skin in the game is a three-year commitment to stay with us once they get their certification before they exit the school system.
What's the difference in compensation for a teacher who has a master's degree versus one who does not?
It's a thousand dollars.
A thousand dollars, yeah, okay. That's one of the things that's always perplexed me about kind of the economics of graduate education in the field of education is the payoff, dollar for dollar in terms of return on investment, almost never there.
Takes seven years to even get your money back. But the majority of them do it, you know, to propel their career and go into a different job that pays more. And most of the time, they're able to do it.
And there ain't, this won't be the only group of folks that we look at. There will be others that want to go ahead and do the traditional online from UT Tyler or Lamar or A&amp;M Commerce or wherever because they may not be able to afford the time commitment of the...
Of the extra.
Of the two or three Saturdays per semester is what we're planning for these Tyler ISD institutes. Half-day sessions for each. That way, we're not just doing general expectations of the superintendent for eight hours in one Saturday. I didn't fill that up. But we're looking to have fun with this. I mean, I think it's something that's going to be inspiring for central office and our principals to participate in growing this and getting to know these folks. It's an exciting proposal that we hope you'll consider.
I like the idea. I think it's wise to identify talent and invest in that talent. I don't really think you can go wrong when you're looking to get better that way. Is UT Tyler doing this with any other districts, just out of Curie House, or is this kind of a pilot deal or?
There were some grants and we actually helped with the grant for Tyler to be able to do this for TEA. And TEA was more focused on rules. And so we are doing a Grow Your Own program where we're doing a little bit of face-to-face. But this is going to be a new step in having those opportunities on the weekends and that extra time to really get to know the students and giving them those opportunities that, through the academies and things like that, field trips that doesn't happen with the other students that go through our program. And also, we're going to waste a grant right so that we can add some additional things that will happen and partner with that.
Is there any apprenticeship through the shower of principals?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because we talked about the new cost, new certification requirements for principals. And you said, oh, they're going up. It really is. At one point, they were talking about the principal certification test being $400.
It's $400.
You know, I think we might have took mine for $70, I don't know.
That's in $100 for sure.
Yeah. But in saying that, there's also, before the state of Texas will certify them, there are what you talked about, apprenticing and internship, practices, authentic things, not these internship hours that everybody's getting, hey, go cover a baseball game and that counts as two and a half hours. That's going to happen. They're also talking about filming them and then sending that snippet, a 30-minute snippet of them coaching someone to TEA that they pass fail.
Just make it as hard as...
The video. I'm just saying, I think we're going to be able to capture some of these things inside of our program. It's going to help these candidates be prepared for their certification test. And I know with the university, they may want to make sure that the folks that are getting in here are able to pass their test too because that is part of their accountability.
And it's a new redesign of the certification, too. And so we're doing a lot of different residencies. It's going to look a little bit different than it has in the past. We've, at UT Tyler, we have done some in-depth residencies where they do do observations, teach observations and they coach. But we also do action research projects and we're adding a lot of different opportunities where they're really actually doing what a principal does, looking at equity audits, making sure that everything is equal for all students. So the residency pieces will change a little bit from the past where they'll spend a lot of time really working on their campus, using their data to be able to make action plans and decisions that help improve their current campus. So they're not just learning about it, they're actually working with whoever's going to be their site supervisor on, this is what's happening on this campus, this is the action plan that I'm going to investigate and work on.
Experience is very, very important.
Those authentic experiences.
This does not necessitate a memorandum of understanding.
We will need to do just a small memorandum, but it's going to be really short and sweet initially because you guys...
We want to do this in front of y'all to get it approved or considered and possibly approved before we go. But that's coming as soon as we get an upper down on this.
From a funding standpoint, the packet said it's included, it's already covered in the existing budget and under, what was it, the...
Well, we have some kind of balance that is set aside for like incentive-type programs and so it'll just come about.
So if we approve this today, you will be coming back with the MOU?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Tyler ISD Leadership Pipeline Initiative at the cost.
Thank you, Reverend Mason. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Is there any other discussion? Questions?
I should be around whenever I was.
I know.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, I have the Head Start Eligibility Training.
Yes, we have a PowerPoint for y'all to watch so that you can get your...
Our training.
Federally required training. Awesome.
Welcome to the Eligibility Final Ruling Training for Head Start. The Head Start Eligibility Final Rule was published in the Federal Register on February 10th, 2015. The new ruling went into effect on March 12th of 2015. The rule strengthens internal procedures related to document review and verification to ensure that only eligible children receive Head Start services. It also codifies statutory changes and clarifies what most programs generally do already. Specifically, the rule provides a roadmap for programs on how to determine whether families are either income or categorically eligible for Head Start services based on homelessness, public assistance, or involvement in the child welfare system. It describes the types of documents programs may accept from families to prove their eligibility and requires programs to maintain those documents in records for a specific period of time. The rule also requires programs to train staff on these eligibility requirements and on the legal consequences for intentionally enrolling ineligible families. Homeless children means the same as homeless children and youth in Section 725.2 of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. Homeless children lack a fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence, including children who share housing with other persons due to loss of housing, economic hardship, or similar reason, are living in motels, hotels, trailer parks, or camping grounds due to lack of alternative adequate accommodations, are living in emergency or transitional shelters, are abandoned in hospitals, or are awaiting foster care placement, who have a primary nighttime residence that is a public or private place not designed for or ordinarily used as a regular sleeping accommodation. Children and youth who are living in cars, parks, public spaces, abandoned buildings, substandard housing, bus or train stations, or similar settings, and migratory children who qualifies homeless for the purposes of this subtitle because the children are living in circumstances described in various clauses through the McKinney-Vento Act. The definition in this regulation also applies to migrant or seasonal Head Start programs. The Process Overview section generally outlines steps staff must take to determine whether a family is eligible for services. Staff must conduct an in-person interview with each family. If the in-person interview is not possible, staff may interview the family over the telephone. Staff must verify the information. Staff must create an eligibility determination record for each participant. The program may keep these records electronically. Regardless of the format, the program must keep these records for all currently enrolled participants for as long as they are enrolled and for one year after they have either stopped receiving services or are no longer enrolled. Eligibility Determination Records must include copies of the documents that were used to verify eligibility, a statement that the Head Start Program staff has made reasonable efforts to verify information, and a statement that identifies the determination of eligibility. In order to be eligible for the program, the family's income must be equal to or below the poverty line, or the family must be eligible for public assistance through temporary assistance for needy families or supplemental security income. If the family's income is above the poverty line, a program may enroll up to 10% of their enrollment with pregnant women or children who would be over-income families. A program may enroll an additional 35% of participants if the program establishes and implements outreach and enrollment policies and procedures to ensure is meeting the needs of eligible children and children with disabilities before serving ineligible children, and the program establishes criteria that ensures eligible pregnant women and children are served first. A family is eligible if a child in the home is homeless or a child is in foster care. Program staff must describe efforts made to verify whether the information is accurate and state whether the family is eligible. If a child is eligible and is participating in a program, he or she will remain eligible through the end of the succeeding program year. The governing body and policy council must receive training within 180 days of the new Training modules must include methods on how to collect information, incorporate strategies, and explain program policies and procedures. A program must establish policies and procedures that include actions taken against staff who intentionally enroll in eligible families. For further questions, please contact Stacy Miles, Director of Tyler ISD Head Start, at Thank you.
You're trying to sign their certificates?
All right. Please submit your certificates to Mrs. Orr. Very efficient.
Okay, next, we have two discussion items under five. The first is an update on the status of organizational health index, the ISB.
Yes, so the board does allocate funds to the administration to operate organizational health. Y'all remember, we brought this on board, I think in 2015, kind of as our internal surveying of effective campus culture as aligned with student performance. Mr. Sanchez is here today to provide an update on OHI. We figure that you provided the funding for us. We want to make sure that we give you some sort of update on where you're spending your money. Mr. Sanchez?
Good morning, and Reverend Hager, President, Dr. Crawford, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. First, thank you for approving this at the last board meeting. And so you will see today that the money that is being spent is being well-spent, is well worth it, as we can see that. You will see through the presentation that not only is there a correlation between performance of schools and our OHI, we've also taken it a step further and we've also included the performance of schools with OHI, along with the attendance of our schools to OHI, and how all those things come together to ensure that we're providing successful student outcomes. So the goal, obviously, is to provide you with an overview of OHI. Am I doing this, John, or are you?
You.
Okay, here we go. So I'm not going to read the definitions to you, but I am going to point out these five definitions because these are the five that we're going to focus in on this morning. And the reason we're going to focus in on those is because these five of the 10 domains or dimensions of the OHI actually are at all-time highs since we started back in the year 2014, 2015. Now, you'll see on the next slide that it's a scattered stair-step, if you will, where one year it was, we started out low, we went up, there was a change in administration, we went down, but then the next year, they all came back up again. And so these five are there, and you will see, this is a, I guess we could call it a three-year, four-year span, that we started OHI and how we have progressed in the improvements of OHI. Now, it's going to be important that it's, we want to be effective, we want to be scoring high at OHI, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that the OHI scores are mirroring the success that we're having at our campus. You know, and there was a time where morale, for example, was very, very high, yet we had a lot of low-performing schools. And so we had to have a discussion about, you know, we put it very bluntly, is the fact that we had a lot of people, and we had a lot of people happy, and we had a lot of people happy going nowhere. And so, as you can tell, that next year, we had a dip there, but then you can see that this year, in this past year, that the morale is one of our highest performing dimensions and people are happy. And so, remember, goal focus is that, does everybody understand where we're supposed to be, where the organization wants to go? Optimum power utilization is that, you know, do people feel empowered and powered? Do they have the ability to make a decision where it affects them the most, the closest level of implementation, if you will? Morale, of course, you know, it's just not about being happy, but do they believe in what it is we're doing? And they're happy about it? Do they feel like they have input, as we talk about autonomy? Do they have a stake in the game? Do they feel like they're part of the decision-making? You know, and then adaptation is, do they feel like they have what they need, okay, to adapt? Do they have the tools and the resources necessary to make the change where the change is being asked to be made? Okay, here are all the scores of all the OHI, and you can tell that every year, when we have a change in administration, there seems to be a dip, but then that following year, the scores go back up. And then they continue to go back up further than they were. As a matter of fact, seven out of the 10 dimensions, okay... As a matter of fact, seven out of the 10 dimensions, okay, were either equal to, maybe slightly a percentage or two points behind what they were, than that they have been in the past when we first started doing OHI. So there's a good stair step, success is happening with OHI, and it's reflective of what's happening in our campuses as we continue to focus on successful student outcomes. So we're really pleased that our principals are understanding what needs to happen with OHI, the investment that we've made, that you have made as a board, to ensure that those two are run in simultaneously, and we're not working in isolation with the academic success, as well as making sure that we have a culture that is positive, the climate of the schools, you know, is going in the right direction. Okay? Next, we're going to look at the student performance, and what we did is, it's, again, top-performing schools, their OHI's are also performing at a high level. So the correlation between those two is very significant. So it's almost like, you know, which one is more important than the other? Well, they're equally just as important, because you have to have a staff that is willing to accept the change, have the tools necessary to make the change, and feel like they're a part of it. As a result, then student performance happens. Okay? So here again is the student performance. At the time that we asked OHI for the information, they'd only have the elementary and the middle school data available, and so thus, that's why you only see elementary and middle schools. Again, schools are performing high on OHI, as well as they're performing high academically. And so, again, the correlation continues to be there. Okay? Again, we provided them with the attendance for the school year. What they went and did is they ranked them, they divided them up into the, again, the thirds, because it's, you know, every time they do the data, it's always a third, a third, a third, because it's the push, pull, and drag effect and everything that happens. Okay? Then the next one you'll see is where we look at the attendance. So we looked at performance on one end, and then we said, well, what's happening with the attendance? And so we're making, in the last couple of years, Dr. Crawford has made it pretty clear to me that we have to have kids in school, but we have to have teachers in school, too. Okay? And so we're now beginning to provide our administrators' data. This year, as a matter of fact, just like students get progress reports every three weeks, this year we started progress reports every three weeks around attendance. Okay? And then we've taken it to another level. Well, they will get a six-weeks report on how many subs they had in their building, and then what was the attendance of staff for that six weeks. And so, as a matter of fact, my new administrative assistant is working on that data as we speak. Not as we speak, but today she's working on that. And so, again, we look at the performance of attendance for campuses, and it also mirrors top-performing OHI scores. Okay? And of course, the most improved of all of them was Dogan Middle School. They had a 65% increase in OHI scores, followed by Three Legs, Head Start, Hubbard, and Clarkson Elementary. Okay? So those are the top-five performing OHI in increase. Not top-performing, but they increased the most over the course of one year to the next. Okay? Questions?
When you say one year to the next, when is it? Like, is it this school year, last school year, or the one before? Like, how, you know what I mean? It's like, is it from?
It's landing data, so this is last year's data.
Last year's data with last year's OHI scores.
Last year being kind of cumulative for the whole year.
So the OHI's, I mean, the, so the OHI will be done again in January, okay? So we'll submit it, they'll send it back, we have the individual conferences, we have the summer conference. We will send them our STAR data, ELC data, in August, September, and then they put those two together.
You'll get this reported next time. Gotcha. Just a little, oh, sorry, Reverend.
No, I don't have a question, just some comments. I went through OHI as a principal. I find it to be very beneficial. If the principal would look at it in the right way, you have to have a mind frame, you may think you're doing a great job, but this data comes back, that's your perception and not how your faculty and staff perceives you and your job and environment. I think it's an excellent opportunity for principals to first look at themselves, and then to look at how they are acting or not acting, and how it relates to the success of campus. And I hope they see it that way, I really do.
Now, I know Dr. Crawford's going to say something, but before he does, I, you know, one of the things we talked about, and we looked at, and tying into Ms. Cano's Grow Your Own, is a lot of the principals and assistant principals that are in our schools today have gone through OHI since '14 and '15, so they know that's just what we do. This is just part of how we operate our schools. So that's a big difference between some of those that are coming from outside of the district and they first start to do OHI. You can see that deer in the headlights looks like, what is this? And so that's kind of another great opportunity that we're having with Grow Your Own program is that we're not having to, you know, we always talk about the return on investment, the return on the investment on some of the programs we're doing, is that we don't have to keep training people and the costs associated with that, because some of these people have already been in our system, and they're ingrained in the way we do it here in Tyler. Dr. Crawford?
Hey, the way we, this is what, not what I was going to say, I was going to go back to attendance, but the way that we use this, been a very safe way of using this, as opposed to one test over one day appraisal, ultimate appraisal. This has been something we use to tell a principal we're really happy with them or we're concerned with them, but it is not done in a way that's antagonistic as far as their final appraisal goes. It could be that way one day, especially when we're rolling like we are. I mean, I think that the data that we're seeing today is really complimentary of the outcomes that we've had as far as student performance goes, but right now it's a pretty safe tool that we're using as far as their life goes. Yeah, what I was going to say about attendance, we had something given to us yesterday from the first six weeks, our school system, the adults in our school system, now, not every one of them, but the adults in our school system, from campus leadership to teachers to central office positions, have a 97.5 attendance rate the first six weeks. That's, I think that's something to be committed of our staffs. I can't say that, I don't think custodial and maintenance was included in that Tasha, were they?
Yes, yes, they were.
They were?
Yes.
So they're all included in, every adult we have in the school system?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry. So 97.5% of all of our adults, that was their work attendance this last?
Including Dr. Crawford.
He's including that report as well.
But in saying that, we started comparing that to our students. I think the district was at 90, actually 97.3, sorry, I rounded up. 97.2, I believe, was our first six weeks attendance for the school system. So that right there, I would tell you that if the adults will come to work, our kids will come to school. And that was the number-one thing that the John Tyler students told the John Tyler staff earlier this year in a retreat. Ms. Beatty put together 10 or so student panel to tell their teachers what they need as students. And the first thing that came out of that was, how did you come to work? I don't want a sub teaching me all the time.
They don't need a sub.
No. So, right. And so, we had enough of a sub challenge last year, but then on top of that compounded was the remaining staff, the permanent staff was taking time off. This year, right now, as we currently sit here, John Tyler has one special ed vacancy and one English vacancy. The special ed vacancy was for health reasons, the English vacancy was the sad, tragic death of one of our employees, or we would be fully staffed. So that's making a difference, at least that's one anecdotal example for you at one campus. And great job, Mr. Martinez.
So if I'm a principal and I get scores, what kind of coaching do I then get about my scores, and then are there action plans that follow from that?
Yes, sir. So what happens is that the survey is sent out in January, they receive the bag within nine weeks, and then we have, we get the report first, and then we meet with Dr. Fireman, and we look at the report. We always do the comparison. We look at our new principals, we look at our existing principals and kind of tier them accordingly. And then they have one-on-one with their supervisor with OHI in a room, they go over the data. So then, then they go and share it with their staff. In the meantime, they're creating a plan, an action plan, if you will, that a template is provided to them. They come back, and they meet with their supervisor, bless you, along the way to see what their action plan is. And then over the summer, they get their team together, and then they have a conference in the summertime where they bring their team of leaders, OHI team, together, and then they plan on how they're going to roll out for the next year, what plan is going to be rolled out for the next year.
We've actually reduced our costs with OHI.
We have.
Over the last three years, I think. We've kind of streamlined some more efficient practices to where we're not spending quite as much. I think we're spending about 20 less.
From the original contract, we're spending, I think, about $50,000 less.
Okay.
Hospital does this stuff, and, I mean, it's directly related to patient outcomes, and that's why we do it. It's great stuff.
The stability at the principal position oftentimes reflect in OHI, or have you found there's a certain year for a new principal, you know, you might be down in year one, up in year two, or year?
That's what the normal trend is, and most of the time, you know, when you get a new principal, if they liked the principal, okay, then the OHI scores may look different. Okay? If the principal was effective, then the scores might look different. Okay? Because oftentimes, they liked the principal, and then a new one comes in because maybe the school needs a change in leadership, because they, the morale was high, remember that? We're happy-going-nowhere mentality, and so then that reflects on the OHI scores. And so we're really, we really take a look at that when we group principals together. When we first started, we would just put them all together, and then the principals who were really successful, you know, and they would have to do a three-day session, principals who continued to get performance-meant OHI scores would sit in the meetings and look at it and say, why do I have to sit here for three days? You know? So then that's when we started changing it up, and that's when it became more cost-effective for us. And so it does, Mr. Washman, is it does reflect change in leadership a lot of times.
And OHI doesn't matter unless you're, if you're putting the student performance piece next to it. It doesn't. In fact, in Dallas, when we were doing this, that wasn't part of it. Now, they did put that as part of your overall rating, but there was no correlation comparisons there. That's why we kind of added that little flavor to it, because it doesn't matter if your OHI scores are high and we're not getting the outcomes we need. So that's what, I think that's what you're kind of saying. Yeah, I wonder if the board can maybe get some of the questions, maybe let them take the survey one time. Just to see that, you can't go in there and do a Liker scale of say that, I'm really, really unhappy, or I'm really, really happy. They ask the same question multiple times in different formats inside of it, and it's all been statistically proven and it's.
I'll make the attempt to see if we can get a copy of it, because it's 80 very, very sacred questions. Very sacred questions that, and so what happens is that they'll have a faculty meeting, come into the room, you'll have a teacher who says, you know, we're going to do, you know, we're going to administer the OHI. The principal has to leave the room, the assistant principals do their own, and so it's the very sacred process. And so, but I will make every attempt possible. And so they kind of, they go through the 80 questions and without the principal in the room, because they don't want the principal to influence.
In any way.
In any way, form or fashion, the results that are on OHI.
Teacher seals it up, and they have to deliver the sealed package.
Us.
1319 Earl Campbell Parkway.
And we have to certify, send it to OHI.
So what would, would it sound like released OHI, like they released a STAR test?
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment to the, this is a discussion item, appointment to the TISD Foundation Board. As an ex officio board member, Ms. Jones, the new executive director for the foundation, contacted me and requested that we fill this slot. She lists the responsibilities for board members as participating in monthly board meetings and foundation events, serve as an ambassador for TISD and foundation within the community, participate in fundraising activities, mainly identifying potential kickoff luncheon guests or businesses we should reach out to, contribute at any level to the foundation so that we can report that 100% of our board supports the organization. And then for the trustee seat, to assist in keeping the lines of communication open between the foundation and school board, and help understand district priorities. Those are the responsibilities. You serve on board of the foundation as well, right?
Ex officio, ex officio of the dawn. Are you ex officio?
Ex officio.
Yeah.
Just got a little interesting.
And they have to approve?
Yeah, that's, so we're going to suggest someone, and then they officially have to approve it.
So who's interested? Guys, ladies? So I see your facial expression.
You auto-committing people kind of already have something to do.
Yeah, I'm not.
So if you're not on the auto-committing, maybe you need something to do.
So I don't, I believe in what the foundation's doing, I don't mind doing something with that, particularly since my term as president will come to an end here at this next cycle. I mean, if anyone else is eager to do it, I would be happy to do it.
I don't make friends.
Well, this is a discussion item, I think, I don't think, I think board president appoints to committees, right?
Yeah, there you go, so appoint yourself.
A point. So we don't have to act on this, but I'll board my name. Do we need to submit two names?
We don't.
Backup name? Okay, they reject that one? Okay, so next up, our favorite time of the year that comes seemingly more often than we think it should, is the quarterly approval of our Launch Start Governance Progress Tracker. I was wondering if we can get some coaching on this. So we identify each quarter essentially anything we're going to do that's going to earn us more points, and then the only other thing that changes is our public particip, is our, is our percent of time on a board meeting spent on student outcomes. So I'm wondering if there's a way to expedite this process, if somebody remembers from last time exactly what we committed to do to earn points, or whether we committed to do anything to earn points. And that would get something. Policy review?
Policy review.
Okay.
That was the only place that you were going to garner more points than you had last time.
And so, policy review is in what? Mr. Martinez, you would like the effort on this stuff?
Yeah, we have that doing.
Should be an accountability.
Yeah, we think it's an accountability.
So accountability is the time.
Accountability, one is the time constraints, or the time, excuse me, the time that you're spending on your, at your board meetings. You had a dip from 15 to 12 one quarter ago. Gina, you know these things inside and out, because you're the one that has to go and watch all the time, all the minutes. What you're feeling in accountability, one, out of the score.
I'll find the policy.
The policy, the policy one, I think is your account, it's actually, I think it's in your structure. We said accountability, but I think it's in your structure, and it's where you go from.
Yes.
It's the four, and it's 12. It's kind of at the bottom of four and top, middle of 12. Has reviewed its level of policies. Yeah. It's under the 12.
So is it the second paragraph under four, under structure, under four limits, it's adoption of local policy?
It's number 12.
It's number 12, it's that last paragraph on 12.
Oh, the board has reviewed its local policies. Okay. And voted to remove policies regarding district operations.
Yes.
So I know we've reviewed and we voted to remove in like seven days, eight days.
You'll get the, you'll really get the, you'll really get the first reading at the...
First reason? We already first read? I thought.
Yeah, it was almost right.
No, that was, that was your update 111.
Right, but I thought that the training, the training we didn't provide that?
No, because we didn't get it back until August. We didn't get it back until...
Excuse me, tell me, we still in score? Doing all that? You afraid we don't score?
Okay.
It'll be a big jump when we do. Oh, by the way, your certification runs out on this probably by November, right? Have any, what? Y'all tell me what you want to do.
I thought we decided we weren't going to pursue recertification because...
Second. You are out of DEA jail for multi-year hour canvases, so...
And it is, there's no refresher training. It is the full deal two days?
That's what we're looking at.
Yes, which...
Remember that? November of 16?
Yes, which, unless someone has changed their mind, our discussion last time was that we've retained the parts of this system that we really like, that we think are helpful and don't see the need to spend two days of training on Lone Star Governance at this point. Yeah, so we're going to continue to use it, use these tools, I think was the other part. Except for, did we have a question around whether or not how much administrative time we're going to cut in?
Yeah, I've got a list of some things that we need to adjust and do away with. The minutes thing is killing us.
And you know, you know from doing it, I mean, it takes a while to calculate every, every little minute that is spent to calculate out the minutes period and then to decide which section that fits in and...
I'll say this, since we've embarked upon this, your board secretary, who also serves as the superintendent's executive assistant, has had a continuous board meeting part of the job since we just started. I mean, it does, it never ends and I'm not saying it needs to end. There just needs to be some gaps and some breathers in there so she can dedicate more time to some of her other stuff, but it's just a constant flow of this and our staff knows that too because we always have CE on workshops and on regular, on regular basis and that doesn't need to end. However, counting the minutes takes up quite a bit of time this far and that and staff salary allocation, some of the things, and we only do snapshots of those, but it is, it's pretty extreme on reporting aspect of it to get y'all at this point. We spend 15 minutes on a meeting, but it never ends.
Do we need to notify DEA that we're going to stop submitting these?
I will do that. I'd be happy to report back to y'all. I'll be gone.
Well, the commissioner was looking for you in Austin.
I'm afraid he wants to present at Midwinter Conference. But I saw Commissioner Morath yesterday and at Service Center and he mentioned, he asked for districts about things that have helped lead them there. And I've told him that LSG's been a good part of what we've been doing for two years. There are some components of it that need to just go away for, for those that aren't as bad a shape as others. And so he asked what those were and I left the room. He called me yesterday at 6:15, but I was there, so anybody wants to know how we can adjust it and so I'll make sure we talk that out.
Well, I think we should give Gina all the praises that she can stand because she's got an outstanding job with this. It all looks like Greek to me sometimes, so we want to thank you for what you've done and what you're doing.
She's done a good job.
So in terms of scoring and submitting, all our scores are the same except for is there a change in whichever the one for public participation is, how did we score there?
I think, I think on one of it, the percentage was more like you couldn't have, I think that it was the length of our meetings that hurt us. In the one area, they're not supposed to be longer than, is it two hours?
Sixteen hours?
I think it's, I think...
Gina, how many meetings did we have over, did we say we had over a three-month span or two-month span?
Well, we, well, that was the thing. We had seven meetings in July and August and I think you're only supposed, they want you to have like two a month.
Two a month. Sounds good to us.
And I think they only want you to do like, was it two-hour meetings? Is that right? And ours were, we definitely had about three or so that were longer than that.
Would count executive session, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. But with the way they've adjusted, you're not supposed to count.
Yeah, with the way, and see, that's the other thing is since y'all went through this, they've adjusted this framework, of course, kind of like DEA does midstream. And so now they're saying that, that part of executive session can't be counted, but...
Oh, well, let's give ourselves a hundred.
You know, if, if we, if we go back and can remember those of us who've been on the board a while, we, we agree that if we have questions to ask, I'm trying to think back, because we can end up having these two-hour sessions, but if you need to ask your questions before board meeting. So if I had a question of Tasha, then I would call Tasha and ask Tasha and get my clarification before board meeting, except lately we've all been asking all the questions right there, which causes a lengthening of our reading.
We still welcome those, right? I don't think we've, we've done anything to stunt that.
No, no, we just need to agree that we're going to do that instead of going on and on and on in our board meeting. It's called a censor, we need to censor our sayings.
Well, I think y'all also get, because our board, because our board being televised and people like to watch those as pastimes before they go to bed.
They do?
Yes.
Yes.
No business telling me to watch.
Yeah, so, so I think that y'all are scrutinized and some folks want some showmanship just for their own entertainment or maybe their, their own political agendas for y'all to question certain things and that's fine. I don't mind y'all questioning everything we do. That's your job, that you're well compensated for. But I, I think that that sometimes can influence us, the length of our board meetings. Hey, y'all, y'all want to meet for five hours? I'll be there because I sent my contract here up there.
If each one of us will sit and look at the board meeting, we know what we should and should not do, we look at our facial expression.
I think you have a dip in accountability one and it's not that big of a difference. I think that's what it would be.
Accountability one.
Twelve?
Oh, we were at 12. Of the total minutes in board authorized public meetings, no fewer than 25% are vested in progress monitoring the board's student outcome goal. So it used to be at 15%. We dropped last quarter to 12.
So you maintain.
So we maintain at 12, Gina, is that right? We didn't fall below the 25% on accountability one?
I think you're probably safe there.
You'll be as long.
Okay, so we're going to maintain there. Accountability two. We're at one point, we've been at one point. I think it's because we've not done, we've not adopted your constraints, is that right? Is that why we're still at a one?
Haven't adopted the constraint in the LSG format.
Okay, so structured then, we've been at a four and we're staying at a four next quarter. If there is a next quarter, we move to 12 because we...
Get all of your policies settled.
Clean up all the policies. Advocacy, we've been at a nine. We're still at a nine because we didn't, we didn't include students at our Lone Star Governance training. We're going to be in nine next quarter as well. Unity, we've been at a 10. So that's certificate of completion of our training. We unanimously agree that we adhered to our policies and we submitted the most recent tracker, so I'm saying that we did that as well. The next time, we're not going to do that because our training will expire. Everything else stays the same. Nine, four, 12, one.
So you're saying we stay the same at the same number?
Yes, we stayed the same and we're projecting an uptick next quarter. So I'll pass this around and I think we have to have a motion for this to...
Yes.
Okay, so I'll accept, undertake a motion that our points stay the same this quarter and they tick out when we complete.
I think you heard your first and second.
Okay, and all in favor say aye. Aye, and both say nay.
Wait here.
Okay.
It's like a 73.
Okay, it's approved. I'm passing around the signature sheet. This is probably the last time we're going to do that, right? Isn't that worthy of celebrating?
It's good to be out of jail.
Okay, next on the agenda is executive session.
We'll hold it.
Please skip.
We got to be...
Calendar monitoring.
So we will change this to governance monitoring. That was kind of my remembrance and I do like some of the things that we've kind of adopted. So we'll still do some quarterly governance checks, maybe not so extravagant and meticulous as this other one, but we'll always have that quarterly available to y'all. So you also have a board monitoring calendar. Remember, we used to do these a long time ago and then there were some boring reports and then one thing LSG did for us was to get us to report on things that matter and we handled things that quote-unquote, not quote-unquote, I mean, don't matter quite as much through just different reporting structures. Either I forward you something or, or something just given for a read-only status in a meeting. We don't have discussion on it. Anyways, in your, in your packet is a new schedule, I believe. Is that in your packet, Gina?
Wasn't it any electronic version?
Was it all electronic version?
It should have been. It should have been.
No, that thing that... Did I make that?
No, I don't know.
Okay, we have table this because it wasn't even back. But basically you can tell it's a little bit thinner. There were some redundant things that were listed inside of the board monitoring calendar. And again, we'll, we'll change the title of this to governance check, governance.
You could stick it after the board governance that might be more governance.
Okay, okay. Anyways, there's your calendar. We'll get y'all a copy of this for the October board meeting so then we'll stick it into consent and...
It doesn't require approval.
Oh, does it?
No, it's just a discussion and I'll...
Although I can't read this, is the schedule set up so that Gary Brown presents at every single board meeting? Because it just feels like...
You're running joke about that internally, that and some other personnel. But we did, yeah, that was one thing we want to make sure we, we scheduled his reporting at appropriate time. Those are good items to tie that about. And this coming year, you'll get your, man, my eyes are going so bad, you'll get your legislative update in October.
You can say that?
No, I just know exactly where it's supposed to be. So you'll get your legislative update in October and we've also scheduled in some safety and security updates quarterly that we'll be presenting to the board since that is a, a, a very important thing we want to make sure that we're doing. And not every one of those are going to be, this is the most exotic things, like what we'll do is one time we'll actually have the social, emotional component of it and we'll give you an update about this Start With Hello program that we executed last week, which I thought was very effective and the school system got rattled around that without spending too much time distracting these from our student outcome processes. We still have annual reporting of, of athletics and fine arts, we have biannual of that along with U Iowa academics. Mr. Brown will be presenting that, by the way, that's under his job now, so, so you'll get Mr. Brown two more times. I can't see anything else up there. Anything else?
I've been to a Taddy Bird Report December. Yeah, up in January, you got Governance, Safety, Security, February is the 1.1.
We left the December 1 blank in case we needed to stick something in there, but we thought that everybody's probably got their eyes on Christmas and we might just have just a regular, good old-fashioned business meeting for y'all. So there may not be LSG, there's nothing to report at that time of year for that, that component. So there's an update of that, we'll send you a copy of it.
It's on your emails. It's on their email.
It's on your email now.
Okay.
At the end, you have one more thing, personnel action.
Yeah, we've got to do executive session first and then come back and do it.
Oh, okay. I do have a comment. Mr. President, I want to thank Tim Loper and the archi-, are they come architects or...
No, we didn't need architects. They're just project managers.
Project managers for meeting with Fritz and I yesterday, whatever day it was, it was very, very interesting and you gain a better understanding, particularly of the project that's going on in John Tower. So when we asked all these questions, why we aren't seeing this and this, so I don't know if the board would like to have a short presentation, a short form of what we received so you can have a better understanding. Now understand how they have to layer different things and you can't do this, but I had the first done, one, two, three. So when people ask, you can give intelligent answers because they did a, I mean, it was an awesome job of explaining.
We do not have a workshop scheduled for November because of the time of Thanksgiving lands and our regular board meeting. What we will do is we will personally invite anyone that has interest in that to the administration building, to me with myself and Mr. Loper.
Ask all the questions.
No, they're both complex projects, involve multiple phasings of just understanding kind of how the phases are layered, why they're sequenced the way they are and, and when we'll begin using different parts of the project. That was all very helpful.
Very helpful.
So November we'll have an update there. Okay, great. Okay, so tried to move us to executive session prematurely a couple of times. I think we now actually have gotten to the point in these where it's time for executive session. There is action to be taken after executive session. So at this time, we'll move into executive session. So at this time, we'll move into executive session.